I'd like to call the order. The Salem Kaiser School District Board Meeting for January 14th, 2014. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristy, if you'd please call the roll.
Jim Green.
Here.
Chuck Lee.
Here.
Chris Brantley.
Here.
Jeff Faville.
Here.
Rick Kimball.
Present.
Paul Kylo.
Here.
Nancy McMorris-Odicks.
Here.
Thank you. We do have a couple of agenda modifications. Board members, at your seat when you came in was a modified board plate for the boundary change issue in West Salem. We had a work session on that before the board meeting, but you do have a revised document that will replace your board plate. Also, I understand we have folks here in the audience that are here for an information item related to 7A in your board plate, Salem Kaiser Public Schools Head Start Pre-Kindergarten Program. I'd like to move that up to after Spotlight on Success. They have some small children, and I'm sure they'd like to get home early tonight. So, if that's all right with board members? Great. Any other agenda modifications, board members? Okay, we'll move on to Spotlights on Success.
So, Mr. Chair and Board, we're very pleased to recognize several individuals this evening for our Spotlight on Success. And to begin, we'll have Mary Jean Sandel, Board Member of the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation, who will be recognizing our Volunteer of the Month.
And I'll call up Raoul and his principal, Phil Decker, along with the nominating teacher, that would be Stacy Hudson. The Volunteer of the Month for January is Raoul Magagna. He was nominated by staff at Four Corners, who state that he is an aspiring teacher and eager to learn teaching strategies while providing support to the students at Four Corners. Raoul wishes to become a bilingual elementary teacher. He volunteers daily at Four Corners, working with students on instruction and behavioral issues. Raoul also volunteered during the school's Focus Summer School last summer, helping students with math instruction. Last year, Raoul volunteered in a fourth grade classroom. He is currently volunteering in the fifth grade classroom of Stacy Hudson, and is continuing to work with some of the students he supported last year. Stacy says that Raoul is reliable, dependable, and works with the students that are struggling in math, reading, and writing. If a student is having a rough day, Raoul will take the time to communicate and provide assistance to that child. He has a passion to help students succeed. Raoul's support for student behavior and academics has made a significant difference for many students. His caring and calm attitude makes him an excellent role model for the students at Four Corners. Thank you, Raoul, for your hard work and your support of Salem Kaiser students. Congratulations.
And now, this is Jay Reeme, the Director of Community Relations and Communications, who will recognize our Community Partner of the Month.
Thank you, Dr. Radic, Chair Green, and members of the board. If the principals of Parish and Bush could come forward, along with the people from our business partner, which is Court Street Christian Church, you could come forward and join the Board Chair and the Superintendent. Representing the church, we have Corey Spangler, Bill Pennhallow, John Pennhallow, and Bobby Lee. And we have Parish Middle School Principal Steve Nelson, and Bush Elementary Principal Monica Tocata, not available tonight. Our Community Partner of the Month is Court Street Christian Church. The church has worked for the last several years in a partnership with Bush Elementary, and just recently added Parish Middle School to their outreach. At Bush, the church has done a variety of activities, including helping at the end of the year carnival, donating hygiene kits to all fifth graders, having a dental hygienist speak to the students, conducting food drives as part of the Feed Salem Campaign, raising funds to help support a needy kids fund, and providing clothing and school supplies to help students and families. At Parish, the church reached out this past September to do a beautification day. Church volunteers pulled weeds, spread bark dust, worked in the parish garden, power-washed the school, and cleaned the parking lots and the edges of the sidewalks. Additionally, the church held a fundraiser for both schools, raising $1,500 to give to the schools to help needy students with clothing, food, and school supplies. Thank you for your continuing support of Salem Kaiser students and their families, and congratulations to Court Street Christian Church as our business/community partner of the month.
Amira Kreitzer, the Director of Elementary Education, will recognize a very special young man I met out in the lobby here right before the meeting, and a teacher.
So, could I have Melinda Wilson, Ethan Pooley, Dr. Cole Johnson, and Principal Janet Press up here, please? Right up there. In November, Sumter Teacher Melinda Wilson was awarded Teacher of the Month by Dr. Cole Johnson and received a check for $200. This is a pretty special award. A student has to write an essay about their teacher and enter into Dr. Johnson's Teacher of the Month contest. The essay then has to be selected from those submitted. First, the fifth grader Ethan Pooley wrote the winning essay. Dr. Johnson's office stated that the essay wasn't just well thought out, it was very thoughtfully written. Ethan's essay was well-written and stated so many positive things about his teacher, Ms. Wilson, and his own learning experience. Ethan wrote that Ms. Wilson is incredibly awesome, caring, supportive, and sweet. He did say she was sweet because she loves chocolate. Ethan wrote that she cares about the students' lives and their choices. Ms. Wilson is supportive, cares about them when they are in tough situations, and helps the students overcome them. Ethan goes on to say that Ms. Wilson is the best teacher. Math seems to be astonishingly easy to learn with her, and writing, she's astounding at teaching writing. Ethan ends his essay with, "Remember, every teacher can make a difference, and I think our teacher just did." Thank you, Ms. Wilson. You can read Ethan's essay by going to the Spotlight on our website at www.salemkaiser.org. Congratulations to Ms. Wilson for getting this award, to Ethan for his winning essay, and to Dr. Cole Johnson for supporting our students and our schools. Thank you so much.
Michael Wolf, the Chief Operations Officer, will now recognize two staff members with the Doug Flat and Dennis Essery Awards.
Good evening, Superintendent Radic, Chair Green, and board members. I'd like to ask Chris Freeman to come forward, please. We're here to honor Chris tonight. The Oregon Pupil Transportation Association honored Chris with the Doug Flat Administrative Support Award. Chris was honored at the Oregon Pupil Transportation Association's Annual Conference in June. The awards program was established as a means of recognizing individuals within the state of Oregon for their outstanding contribution to student transportation. Chris started her work in transportation in August of 2008, where she has served as Senior Transportation Secretary in the Office, providing support to all sections of transportation. In letters of support for the nomination, her nominators speak of Chris's awesome skills and desire to support staff. Some of the comments include, "She is always willing to take the time to offer her clerical expertise whenever needed. She demonstrates a positive attitude and deals with all situations and individuals with a great deal of integrity and caring. She always goes above and beyond to meet the needs of everyone and is a great example of providing excellent customer service for students, parents, and fellow staff members." Congratulations, Chris, and thanks for being part of the team. And another individual from transportation, Michael Shields, the director. Again, at the conference in June, Michael was honored with the Dennis Essery Award. This was, I believe, the first-ever award given by the organization. And the awards program was established to recognize selfless individual achievement. It acknowledges and celebrates exemplary leadership that has a significant and positive impact on a student, school system, and/or a community of leaders and learners. Michael's leadership abilities are recognized by colleagues throughout the state and the nation, I might add. In one letter of support from the transportation manager in Eugene, he stated that Michael has the ability to build a culture of trust and respect which is evident with everyone he has contact with. He has made an impact on them personally, professionally, most of all positively. His guidance and advice speaks volumes about his character, attitude, and professionalism, and I can certainly attest to that. Thank you, Michael, for the leadership and the positive impact that you've made statewide in our transportation department and district and nationally. And I might say that our transportation department won more awards at that conference than any other district in the state. So, congratulations.
Okay, before we move on to our next agenda item, many of you may notice there's a new person sitting up here at the dais. We've welcomed in our interim superintendent. The board will vote later tonight. I guess it's somewhat presumptuous, but I'm assuming we'll vote to support the contract for our interim superintendent. I'd like to welcome Dr. Paula Radic to the district as our interim superintendent. Paula, if you could just say a couple of words about yourself.
Thank you. I'm very, very pleased to be here. Most of you know that I've come from the area of Newburgh, which is about 45 minutes away. Sometimes it's longer, based on the fog in the morning and night when I go home. I worked as a superintendent in the Newburgh School District for 13 years and retired about a year and a half ago. So, people said to me, "So, Paula, why are you coming to Salem Kaiser?" And I told them that I like to go fishing, and I like to go crabbing, but I wasn't having much success. And so, when I came here this evening and saw Ethan and his teacher and his principal, I remembered how passionate I am about teaching and learning in our children. So, I'm very, very pleased to be here. I'm going to do my best to contribute to the district in the six months that I'm here. Looking forward to meeting our staff and students as I visit schools, and very much looking forward to working with our Board of Directors as well. So, I appreciate the warm welcome I've received and look forward to meeting many of you as the days progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move into Audience Communications, I did want to modify the agenda, as I said previously. So, board members, in your board plate is 7A. It is, I believe, a quarterly report that we receive on the Head Start programs within our district, and I wanted to move that up because there were some families here for this part. It's primarily an informational report, and if there were any questions from board members on that item...
Can I just comment?
Yes. Questions or comments?
I just always really appreciate getting this report and seeing the number of kids, both that are getting support through Head Start, and always dismayed at the number that are on the waiting list, and hope that we can move to a place where that waiting list is gone.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Chris.
I was going to say basically the same thing, Nancy, as I've been sort of watching the OEIB subgroup on the early childhood process, and I'm hoping that they can, over the years, build up a system so that all of our kids come into our kindergartens ready to go. Because what I see in these reports, and this is not the final report, but when we look at them at the end of the year, is the growth that we see in kids from fall to winter to spring, and right now, we just see the fall numbers. So, I just want to thank them for the work that they do with the kids they have, and like Nancy, I just would love to see it hit all the kids that need it.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item. That's Audience Communications, related to agenda items only. We have two people signed up. When I call your name, please come up to the podium. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We are using timers this evening. District Council Paul DiCaplos is running our timers. When the yellow light turns on, you'll have 30 seconds to finish speaking. When the red light turns on, your time is up. And please state your name and address for the record. Stephanie Knowlton.
Hello, I'm Stephanie Knowlton, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before the board. Do I say my address? I can't remember. 4915 Coleman Drive, southeast. Thank you. I cannot support the current proposal as-is for the West Salem School boundaries, because it fails to tell me how the boundaries will impact my son and his 300 classmates at Harret Elementary. Excuse me. While the district did draw lines on a map, it has refused to say what will happen to the dual-language program that's at the heart of this school. Harret Elementary isn't just a building, it's a bilingual community. Parents, teachers, and even the district has encouraged these students to make a leap of faith and study in two languages. We reassured our children, as they showed up on the first day of school, terrified because they didn't know a single word. We encouraged them to learn a new alphabet, to keep trying when the words didn't come easily, and eventually celebrated when they started reading in a new language. What happens to these students if they're dropped into English-only classes halfway through this metamorphosis? Many won't be at grade level, which was a sacrifice that was supposed to eventually pay off with dual literacy, and they'll perhaps lose most of what they've learned. Yes, there is an exemption clause, but that simply allows them to stay in the building at Harret and does not guarantee the chance to continue on in their dual-language education. I understand the district needs to add students to Harret in order to balance out the rest of the schools. I believe that's possible based on the numbers presented without disrupting the dual-language education of the approximately 300 students who already attend the school. I propose a dual-language continuity clause that allows students to stay in the dual-language program at Harret. This still leaves room for nearly 200 additional students, and the capacity will grow as current students exit out of the program. Please keep the dual-language community at Harret Elementary intact. We need more communities like it, not fewer. As an example, I just wanted to share with you, my kindergartner, Alex, started there this year, and within a week of going to the program, he started asking me, "Mom, what other countries, where do they speak Spanish?" Already, he was learning a global perspective in kindergarten. That's what this program does. Not only that, he met one of the instructional assistants who speaks Spanish, and when I told him and I introduced, he's like, "Wow, that's your real language?" She was like a rock star to him because she spoke Spanish, the language he was so eagerly trying to learn. So, I believe those are just examples of why we should honor the commitment that these students have made to learn in two languages at once, and I would hope that the board would really take that into consideration when it's looking at the boundaries, and maybe press staff members to be more specific on how it'll impact the community at Harret. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I have copies, but I ran out of paper, so I'll just...
You can give them to Kristy, and Kristy can get them out to us. Thanks, Stephanie. Bill, is it Widener or Weedener?
Widener.
Widener.
Now, Paul, don't skimp on my time, okay? I'm Bill Widener. I live at 1785 McCaw Street, and I'm also here to talk about the West Salem boundaries issue, the changes. While I understand the huge challenge that it is to redraw district boundaries, I am concerned about how the numbers fell with the capacity at Harret. As the numbers that the district provided us, Harret ended up being at 95% capacity without taking into account the in-district transfers, which right now is about 35%, 40% of the students at Harret. And so, the concern being that if the school's already at 95% due to the boundary changes, we're worried that these in-district transfers will go away. And the problems with that are many. First of all, the in-district transfer students, just from a total anecdotal observational point, the families seem to be some of the most supportive, some of the most active in the community, and I think part of the reason is that the families are making quite a sacrifice to bring their kid there every day. There's no public transportation. We've noticed that a lot of the members of the parent club are those in-district transfers and travel from South Salem, or there's even people coming in from Monmouth and areas like that. So, there's quite a commitment there that's demonstrated. And also, we want to make sure that, as the speaker before me mentioned, that the people that are in the program now, that that continuation exemption applies to them for the same reasons that she cited, that the students have been put into this program, and it takes time for it to pay off in the end, learning both English and Spanish, and we'd like to see that continued for them. And furthermore, the program does not just benefit the students, and I'm sure that you feel the same way, does not just benefit the students at Harret, it's quite a benefit to the Salem Kaiser community in that it's bridging the gap between the English speakers, native English and native Spanish speakers, and that's a social solution that I think has long-term legs, and so, we hope that you will address that when looking over the boundary changes. Thanks.
Thank you. That's the only names we have on the list of folks signed up. Anyone else wanting to speak on agenda items? Yes, ma'am, please step up to the podium. State your name and your address, and you'll have the same three minutes that I...
It's not going to take three minutes. I'm Lisa Lewis Bauer. I live at 960 Dahlke Ridge Court Northwest, and I didn't prepare anything. I'm just a regular Joe, but we came to support the boundary changes. So, we had sent an email, I think you probably saw it, Parent Proposal, and we were at the committee meeting over in West Salem, and there's a group of us here that just came to say that we supported that, and we are very happy with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to our action items. First, in your packet, board members, 3A is the Interim Superintendent Contract. As I previously discussed, we do need to vote on Dr. Radic's contract. I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
So moved.
All moves.
Second.
Second by Nancy. Any discussion, questions, debate? Yes, Jeff?
I've always found a lot come on the PERS issue.
On the PERS issue?
Yeah.
Because Dr. Radic is retired and a PERS retiree receiving retirement benefits, we will not be making a PERS contribution on her behalf. She needs to limit her number of hours, as is mentioned in the contract, but we do not make either a PERS contribution or a health insurance contribution for Dr. Radic, so it is just straight salary as negotiated.
Okay, and limit at the hour, what's the limit?
Paul, you...
Oh, it was right at halftime.
Paul, can you, you want to talk about that?
We have in Section 8, the hourly limitation of 1,039 hours between January 1, 2014, and June 30th, and that's the number of hours that Superintendent Radic would be allowed to work and still be a retiree.
Rick?
And I guess we need to qualify that. She actually works between those dates, because I know she's going to work more than 1,039 hours, so...
Well, we hope not.
Well, she's not supposed to.
She's not supposed to.
No.
Any other further questions?
That's pretty interesting.
There's the eight-hour clock, and then there's reality.
Yeah. That's what I was trying to say, Chris. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll call for the question. Those in support of the contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It's unanimous. The next action item is the contingency request for funds to support the superintendent search. Dr. Radic.
Thank you. In October of 2013, Superintendent Husk announced her resignation from the Salem Kaiser School District, and then that prompted our Board of Directors to begin the planning process for a superintendent search. On December 10th of this 2013, the board voted to hire Ray and Associates. So, a transfer of $48,300 from the contingency fund is requested to cover the costs associated with the search. Those costs include such things as advertising, travel costs of applicants, and costs associated with the site visit should the board decide to do so. So, the staff is recommending that the Board of Directors approve the resolution and transfer the funds as indicated.
So moved.
Moved by Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Nancy. Debate, discussion? Yes, Jeff?
If we didn't, what would be the result?
If we didn't win?
If we didn't make this move out of contingency, what would be the result?
Yeah. Where would it come from?
Mike?
The appropriate budget line for this expenditure does not have the funds necessary to make the expenditure, so this is how we adjust for that in the budget.
When we created our budget last year, we didn't know that Superintendent Husk was going to leave, or we would have set aside something within the budget for something like this. So, this is exactly what we have contingency set aside for within our budget, and this is a proper action for this board to take. It doesn't modify the budget to a point where we need to reconvene the Budget Committee, but without this, we'd have to have a second round of voting on to take it out if we didn't pass this tonight. Any other questions? Yes, Chris?
Let me clarify what you just said. So, if we didn't pass this tonight, then we would have to go back to our decision to hire the search firm.
No, Mike?
No, this is a technical adjustment for the budget, because what we would like to do is make sure that the appropriate expenditure is in the appropriate budget.
Right.
Right? And so, we could look around to other budgets in the organization in the general fund that aren't expended, right, and transfer money, but that's not the intent of, you know, those budgets were created for a specific purpose. The budget that these expenditures appropriately should be charged to doesn't have the necessary funds to do that. Thus, we're at the contingency request.
That's clear.
Okay. Nancy?
And it's clear that we've made the decision to hire the search firm, and we have a contract with the search firm.
That is my understanding. We have executed a contract with Ray and Associates.
My question was solely to make sure it was really clear.
Yeah.
And that's clear.
Any other questions? If not, I'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Again, unanimous. And the next one, action item, is the sale of Middle Grove Elementary School. Board members, you'll remember, we have had a long history with Middle Grove Elementary School and on the potential sale of this property. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Radic to explain where we're at in the process now.
Thank you. The school board authorized the sale of Middle Grove in October of 2012, and the district received an offer from Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency in the amount of $1.2 million. This offer is consistent with the appraisal presented to our board. The school board has requested to approve the sale of Middle Grove and authorize the district's Chief Operations Officer to execute all the documents and actions required to complete the sale of the property, and this work also includes all work related to claiming title to the property.
Rick?
I move we approve the sale of Middle Grove as presented.
Second.
Rick moves, seconded by Paul. Any questions, discussion? Chris?
Just the obvious question about the title and where we are in that process.
Paul?
That has been filed. There are certain procedural hoops that we have to go through for notification of the fourth-generation heirs of that couple who, in the mid-1800s, constructed that little tiny school, which is no longer on the property. So, we anticipate that process to be cleaned up here, the notification to be cleared up here in January, February. We hope to get a court date, and that this will all be behind us so we can close this transaction.
Chris?
Follow-up to that, then, is if it were to go south on you in terms of getting that title cleared, what would tonight's action, if we all vote to say yes, sell it, and then that? I guess my question really is, where is Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency on this whole issue?
Well, their offer to purchase is contingent upon us clearing up the title, and so, if something didn't happen that needs to happen, then we're back talking with the buyer.
And it'll come back to us.
Right. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
No.
Jeff's no. It is approved. And we'll move on to the adoption of the consent calendar. You've got a variety of things in there related to the business adoption and appropriation of grant project budgets and personnel. Anybody need to pull anything for individual discussion? If not, I accept a motion to approve the consent calendar. Chuck moved.
Second.
Seconded by Paul. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Adoption of the consent calendar. We're into readings, and we're going to hear again about school attendance, boundary changes in West Salem. For everybody in the audience, we did have a public work session of the Board prior to this meeting tonight, meeting with staff to discuss this issue, and this is our first reading of this. We would bring this back to our February Board meeting for final reading and approval. So, I will turn it over to Salam.
Board members, if I could remind you, please pull your microphones close to you. We're hearing that folks in the back of the room can't hear you.
Okay, we're having some technical difficulties. Our projector is not on.
Mike, do you want to jump ahead to the lease to see if we can get the, if we can get the projector working? Are you willing to talk about that issue? Okay. Board, if it's all right with you, while they're working on our technical issues, if we could jump to 5B, the lease of the land for parking lot at the central kitchen site, and that's our chief operations officer, Mike Wolf. Mike?
Superintendent Radic, Chair Green, members of the Board, we have his first reading for a lease of land for a parking lot near our central, our central kitchen site. We have been approached by State Investments LLC, interested in developing a parking lot to support some of their buildings in the area, and it's a, it's the property, our central kitchen is out in the industrial area in South Salem. They're looking at one acre of the 4.9 acre property, and the, there we go, thank you. The district has no current plans for the use of the field over the next 10 to 20 years, and the proposed parking lot will not interfere with the operations of the central kitchen facility in any way. The lease will require a change of zoning for that property that will not affect the district's current use of the property, but will allow for a surface parking lot to be used on the property. If the zone change application is denied by the City of Salem prior to the start of the construction, then State Investments can terminate the lease. There's a draft lease in your packet that was prepared for State Investments to maintain and operate a parking lot facility on this lot. The initial lease is for 10-year period with options for two additional five-year extensions. These extensions would require an agreement by both parties, so they're not automatic. The lease payments begin at $1,791.67 per month for the first two months, or for the first two years, excuse me, with the annual escalation rate based on CPI, but not less than 2% annually. The district council was involved in developing the lease, and it's been reviewed for legal sufficiency. Our recommendation is that you authorize the chief operations officer to enter into a lease with State Investments for the use of a parking lot facility for the terms mentioned, 10-year initial period with a renewal option, two five-year renewal options. Again, this is presented to you for first reading and action in the February 11th Board meeting. And I'd entertain any questions that you might have.
Chris? And then Nancy.
Why lease and not buy?
They're interested in leasing, and so that's how they approached us.
Does, do we know where the money will be used? Is there any plan specific for what we'll do with that money?
We, just like any other, you know, we'll either move into the general fund like any other revenue source, you know, general revenue source, but we can make determinations later about that. So, no, no specific use has been identified for this.
So, I have a, just a real quick question for you, Mike. So, in building this and maintaining it, and the zone change, and the application costs, and the water, the, the surface water runoff costs, all that will be paid by the lessee?
Yes.
So, no cost associated to the district in any way, shape, or form?
No, and the maintenance of the facility is very important, and we took that into account so that at the end of a 20-year period, we have a well-maintained, fully functioning parking lot if we decided we needed one.
And this does not interfere in any way, shape, or form with our operations of our central kitchen, Sodexo's operations?
No, no, it's actually on the other side of the vacant field.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Mike. Again, Board, that was for first reading. We'll bring that back to the February meeting to vote on the lease. Salam, Mike, thanks for being willing to shift that so we could get our technology up and running. It appears that we have.
Absolutely.
So, we're back to our readings on the school attendance area, boundary changes in West Salem.
Right. Superintendent Radic, Chair Green, members of the Board, this is a first reading item only relative to the proposed changes to the West Salem boundary. I feel like I'm standing in between a tell-em, tell-em, what do you call it? About Tom Turgeon? I can't see the screen. So, I just want to remind the Board that we established boundaries in West Salem in 2011 after we opened two new schools. It's okay, I can reach over it. Sorry. Thank you. And typically, we review boundaries every five years based on enrollment patterns. However, this time, we had to do it much sooner than expected, and simply because of the enrollment patterns and trends that we're seeing in West Salem. So, as we look at any boundary adjustment or modification of any kind, we want to do it as comprehensively as we possibly can because we don't want to do it that frequently. So, as we looked at West Salem, it was really important that we look at enrollment at all schools and to balance that enrollment. Currently, we have schools that are over-enrolled and others that are under-enrolled based on their capacity. We want to make sure that we have continuity for our elementary students as they move to middle school. Currently, we have three elementary schools that split into two middle schools. We want to maintain neighborhoods, which is a value and a priority for the Board and the district and the community. That's what we heard at the last boundary setting process in West Salem. So, that is something we definitely factored into our thinking. We also wanted to plan for growth. It's quite evident that West Salem is an area that's experiencing a lot of growth in a, in a variety of different areas, whether it's multi-housing or single-family housing. We also wanted to allow for some flexibility in programming, which means two available classrooms for additional programming needs that the school and the district may have. We also wanted to plan for full-day kindergarten. So, we thought we would be remiss if we didn't do this comprehensively so we don't have to do it every two or three years, and we can do it for the long term. So, these are the elements that, that we looked at in considering the, the boundary adjustment in West Salem. Process-wise, we have a district team that is comprised of district staff working directly with the principals in West Salem at all schools impacted, that reviewed a tremendous amount of data in terms of enrollment trends, current enrollment patterns, where the students are, the demographics of the schools, the, the needs of the schools, and based on that, we were able to go through multiple iterations of proposals, were to the point where we felt that the one we have is the best one to take out to the community. After that, we held six community meetings, one at every elementary school and a joint meeting for the two middle schools. We collected comments from approximately 300 participants. I just want to compliment the West Salem community for their involvement in this process. They were engaged, they were respectful, they were extremely helpful in, in helping us understand what, what information that may have been missing, or we did not have based on the maps that were provided to us. So, they were extremely helpful, and we really appreciate their participation and the respect that they gave us as we went through this process. So, we compiled all of the information that was provided to us, including some modifications to the proposal and the maps that we took out to the community, and we made adjustments based on that, went back to the community, made a final presentation, and what we bring you today is the final presentation that was, that was modified based on that input. You may be interested in the themes that we heard. Some of the audience members this evening testified on, about dual language. Dual language is an area of great concern to the West Salem community. There was a concern about having, maintaining a balance in socioeconomic status at all schools. There were some requests for expanding the continuity exemptions, and Mike Wolf, my co-presenter, will talk about that briefly. There were concerns about walking versus busing, especially in a neighborhood, especially in an area where most schools are fairly close to each other. The majority of the population and the schools are within a one-to-two-mile radius of each other. So, somebody may actually see a school from where they live, but they're actually in a different attendance area. So, we had lots of conversations and feedback about that. We also heard that they wanted us to minimize splitting cohorts that feed into the middle schools, so we actually reduced that from three to one, and the one that splits actually feeds into these respective middle schools already. They wanted us to reduce the overall impact on students. Initially, our proposal had an impact of 34%. Mike will talk about that. The one we bring you tonight has an impact of 24%. So, it reduces the, the number of students that will be affected by this change. And they also wanted us to support, to consider and support the alternative proposals that they provided us, which were extremely thoughtful and insightful to where they lived and helpful to us. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike to walk you through the proposed changes and to cover a couple of other items that are pertinent to this process.
Thank you, Salam. Good evening again. I'm going to adjust this a bit, and then I'm going to start going over through the maps. And I'm actually, I'd like to start by just briefly orienting you to the map, the visual aid itself, and there's the, the map, the color-coded map here for the boundary change process. The, yes, I can point here too, although I had my eyes, I had surgery back in October, and I can't see that. But I'll try, really hard. No, I won't. I'm going to use these because this is exactly what you're seeing up there, and you can see the numbers a little bit better. So, what you'll see is the nomenclatures for, for each of the schools, and I'll start with Brush College. You'll see that that's BCC, that's Brush College Current Attendance Area. You'll notice that that traces down to the west as well, down into this area, and for those who are looking on the map, you can see that down around this area. And so, what this tells you is that the current Brush College attendance area is identified by the BCC nomenclature. It also shows you, based on the color coding, that these current Brush College attendance areas will now become part of Harret's attendance area. And so, as you look across the map, you can see that we've made shifts, minor shifts with Calipuya now being able, will now attend, this area here will now attend Chapman. We've made a few shifts with Chapman as well down in this area, now attending Myers. But essentially, as Salam said, when we went out into the community, we realized that we were coming back into the community sooner than we would have liked in a, in a, in the perfect world. And so, we really took into account that and the feedback that we received from the community members. And so, you can see that reflected in the numbers in these columns here. The BCP MAX is the boundary change maximum, and that's the current staffing ratio that we have in the district, student-teacher staffing ratio, also taking into account a full-day kinder in the future, and creating two classrooms of space for future growth, both enrollment and programmatic growth. So, that's what the BCP MAX is. What you see in the next column is existing students in the area, which you can see, we were significantly over-enrolled in several of our schools. We, Brush College was heading in the wrong direction around long-term enrollment patterns. You can see that Calipuya was definitely over where we needed it to be, and you could see that Harret was significantly under its BCP maximum. Part of the reason for that was because in the last boundary change process, Harret was turned into a dual-language school, not a neighborhood school. And in our proposal, we're recommending that we move Harret back to a neighborhood school with a dual-language program. Yes?
So, tonight in testimony, we heard that there were 300 students, in the range of 300 students at Harret, yet you list 186 living in the attendance area. Does that mean that there are approximately 114 in district transfers currently there?
Right. Yeah, and basically, we're looking at about 100, yeah, 130 in district transfers for the dual-language program. Now, remember, there's a difference between today's enrollment and the students in the planning area. The numbers that I'm showing you are the students that are, that live in the planning area that would go to Harret in the future. Remember, we're also re-establishing the baseline for future enrollment patterns for West Salem, and so that's why we're using these numbers to re-establish the base that will drive the enrollments in each of our schools in West Salem. Any other questions? Okay. And then, the next slide is, as Salam said, the impact, which is, our original proposal had about a 34% impact. And because of the modifications that we made, primarily based on the input and thoughtfulness of the community, allowed us to create some modifications where we actually reduced the number of potentially impacted students to 24%. And the, the visual impact of this map is essentially, we wanted to be mindful and sensitive to the community in West Salem because we were coming back in much sooner than we had anticipated. So, we wanted to make sure that those parents that were not impacted could see that their one visual, that you're not impacted. And so, the focus and the conversations were clearly around the parents and the students that were impacted by this change. Okay? Any questions on the elementary level?
Mike, I'm seeing a different color up on that than on the poster board here, that kind of yellowish color under the far-left green, that number 11.
Eleven.
And I, and I don't see that as a key up there.
No.
Correct.
The number 11, I don't know where, what that shading is for. Harret, we wanted to call out Harret specifically in the impact area because there were so many, because it's a, it's not a neighborhood school currently, we wanted to make sure that we were sensitive to those who were living in the current Harret area but were actually attending Calipuya.
So, those kids and parents in that block that's numbered 11, for lack of a better identifier, where do they currently go?
I'm looking at this. They're currently in Calipuya right now.
And they are-
And they will stay in Calipuya.
They will stay, so that's just a misnomer up on the-
Yeah, I think that's just an error in shading.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, moving on to the middle school proposal. Again, similar nomenclatures. You can see where the, the current attendance areas are. Remember, in our existing, what currently exists today because of the middle school boundary that we have, plus you, three of our elementary schools split between middle schools. And in, in our proposal, the modifications, only one does, and that's the Calipuya attendance area right here, that will now go into the Walker attendance area, which is the red boundary. This is the new Walker boundary, and then the rest is Straub. The existing boundary is an east-west line along Glen Creek. So, we're shifting our middle schools to a feeder system, which is in alignment with the rest of the district. So, all of our elementary schools throughout the Salem-Kaiser School District feed into their appropriate middle school. And so, we're moving West Salem back to that, or we're actually creating that for the first time in West Salem. And you can see, again, in the BCP MAX column, and then the students in the area, and then where we would, our proposal would essentially level the student population between Walker and Straub. A question that was raised that's really important is, when you look at these BCP numbers, and if, if I were to go back just briefly to the elementary proposal, you'll see that Brush College numbers are significantly less than any of the other schools. And the main reason for that is that we- And the main reason for that is that we, one of our factors that we're looking at is potential growth in West Salem. And clearly, when the Great Recession hit, the development and growth slowed dramatically. We're slowly creeping out of that, and so we wanted to position West Salem for the future and the growth that we know will happen. We don't have a crystal ball exactly how fast or how much, but we do know where the areas are. And briefly there, right along this area, there's a few pockets of land that will be developed in these areas, down in here as well, around Harret, and also along Wallace Road in the future. So one of the reasons that Brush College's future attendance numbers look lower is because we're anticipating growth and that most of the growth, areas of growth will now be in the Brush College Attendance Area. And so that's the same for Straub in this scenario, because Brush College feeds into Straub Middle School under our proposal. Again, when you look at the numbers between where we would like the schools to be and our proposal, they are essentially balanced for the capacity of the facilities. Okay? Those, these numbers here represent about a 67 and a 68 percent utilization of the existing space in both of those middle schools. So we've aligned future attendance to the capacity of the middle schools. We also have the impact area, so again, only the green is impacted with this change. Now, there is still one elementary school that is split between two middle schools, and that's Calipuya, but that condition exists today already. And the feedback that we received from the Calipuya parents that are down in this area here is that they would prefer to stay at Walker, which is where their kids are already going to go. So we were able to accommodate that with this proposal. Again, 23 percent affected as opposed to our proposal, which was at 34. There's another piece to this, which is the continuity exemption. I'd like to spend a little bit of time on that, if there are no questions about the actual boundary changes themselves.
Any questions on the boundary changes? Doesn't look like it, Mike.
Okay. All right. Part of our proposal is to extend the normal continuity exemptions that the district already has in place for a boundary change process. What I mean by that is, let's take the elementary level first. If you have a student in an elementary school and the boundary change is on you, and that student is incoming to fourth grade or incoming to fifth grade, they are automatically granted a continuity exemption IDT. You still have to fill out the paperwork, but your child can stay at that school through that level. That continuity exemption does not carry to the next level of their education, of their career. We received a significant amount of feedback, and I would say probably one of the highest levels of feedback around this particular issue, because we had just come into West Salem three years ago to create these boundary changes that now we're, we're back talking about. And so our proposal includes an extension of the current continuity exemption, which essentially is in your board plate, and it reads that K1, 2, 3, and 4, if you're currently enrolled in those grades in the, in the current school year, the 2013-14 school year, and enroll, and, and you will be enrolled at the chosen school as of January 14th of this year, you can stay. So if you're a kindergartner, and you're at Calipuya as an example, well, obviously it would be up to your parents, but you would be able to stay at Calipuya through the extension of the continuity exemption. Now, that's through an IDT process, and I want to remind the board that our IDT processes do not come with transportation. So while we would create an extension to the continuity exemption, we don't support that with transportation resources. Was also brought up around preschoolers that are about ready to enter kindergarten that have a sibling at that elementary school, would we extend that even further? And we did. The next bullet down says, incoming 2014-15 school year kindergarten students who are siblings of another student eligible for and granted a continuity exemption would also be included in the extension. So we were able to, we're presenting that as part of our recommendation as a one-time change to our normal boundary change process with respect to a continuity exemption. Again, we extend that at the middle school, so if you're a sixth or seventh grader currently, you would be granted an automatic continuity exemption through this extension and an IDT to stay at that school. Any movement between levels, we have the normal IDT process that takes into account siblings and keeping siblings together at, at the schools. And we didn't extend that in this proposal as part of an extended continuity exemption. We discussed it and felt that our normal IDT process actually does accommodate that need, and keeping siblings together is a high priority for principals and our level director as they, they work through the applications. Questions?
Jim?
Nancy?
So there's two things on this continuity exemption that seem to me to apply to the Harret dual-language students. And that is that if they currently have an in-district transfer and are in good standing, they are allowed to stay at their school. And secondly, the K1, 2, 3, fourth grade during this year are allowed to stay at the school, that both of those would apply to those students?
That is correct. So if somebody is on an IDT, we would be able to maintain that for them. The continuity exemption expands it to anybody else that wants to stay at that school, but if they're on an IDT for a program, I believe the process allows for that.
And the follow-up to that is, so they can stay in this school, when will it, when will the question be able to be clearly answered about whether or not those students will be able to continue with certainty the dual-language program?
I think there are, there are two parts to that question, if I may. One is whether the students will be able to continue at that school, and I think the continuity exemption grants them that. The continuity exemption extension grants that relative to the program. Once the board votes on the boundary, and we know that these are the established boundaries, we will start looking at the programs at these schools. We have not made any plans to change the programming at these schools at this time. The only thing that we have to consider is the location of the program. So dual-language maybe will continue to be an option in our district. The one thing that we have to look at as a district is the location of those programs to maintain the standards that we've identified for a dual-language program, which is the balance of enrollment of students, English speakers and Spanish speakers. But in terms of Harret, the conversation has really been about the boundary so far and not the program, and we have no, we have no plans to change anything relative to the program. We just need to make sure that it's adequately staffed in order to meet the English-only speakers and the dual-language students.
So that speaks a question in my mind, real quickly. If I look at your first one that has the proposed elementary school boundaries, Mike, and you show me the elementary school, and I look at Harret, and the BCP MAX is 482, existing students in the attending area is 186, and the proposed student area with this shift in boundaries takes it to 459, and assuming you keep the dual-language program at Harret, there's 130 kids that transfer into that school for the dual-language program that aren't taken into consideration for that 459 number, which would take us up over the BCP MAX at that, at that site?
It would. There's a couple of things. It's a great question. We did include the dual-language numbers in, into all of the planning here. As Salam said, this boundary change process doesn't cancel any IDTs that are currently granted.
So that?
You counted them.
So, follow-up, that 459 then includes those students?
Yes, yes. The 459 includes the 130 IDT students that are currently there.
Okay. All right. I had heard something different in the presentation, so I wanted to make sure. Rick?
Well, I agree with you, Jim, because the header on the column is confusing from that regard, because it says proposed students in the area. So anyway, now I understand a little better. I'm a little worried about how we're using a couple of words. When we talk about the continuity exemption, I understand that, and it's going to be automatic, I understand that. Problem is, if I'm with parents sitting in the audience and I think automatic, okay, I don't need to do anything, it's just going to happen. No, they're going to need to do something. They're going to need to apply for an in-district transfer, correct?
That's great. Yes, that's correct. And we were very explicit in our presentations and communications with the parents, and we're also sending out, as a matter of fact, tomorrow, I believe, or shortly thereafter, letters to each of the parents with explicit instructions. As we had mentioned before, we need the parents to understand this change, and if they have any questions, certainly call, and declare early their intention to either stay with the extended continuity exemption or that they would move to the new school.
Thank you.
Paul, you have a question?
I have a question. In the board plate, there's a sentence which I now don't understand. It says, Harret Elementary will shift, shift back to a neighborhood school by expanding the Harret Boundary. What are they now if they're not a neighborhood school? And so they're shifting back to neighborhood, so what's the difference? Because now you've lost me.
Yep. So Harret currently is considered to be a dual-language school. So students that want to participate in the dual-language program, Spanish and English, have the option to enroll at Harret. Students that are interested in an English-only program, meaning they do not participate in dual-language, do not have that option at Harret. In the last boundary-setting process, this change was made where Harret became exclusively a dual-language school, and those students that wanted to be in an English-only program were shifted to Calipuya. And that's why we're actually going through this process right now, because Calipuya is over-enrolled and Harret is under-enrolled based on their PCP maximum.
So it sounds as if Harret is no longer going to be dual-language, and that has been decided?
Harret will, the proposal that we bring you as part of this boundary adjustment is that Harret will revert back to a neighborhood school with a dual-language program in it. So it will be able to accommodate those students that want to be in dual-language and learn in both languages, and students that want to be in an English-only program.
So there will be the, I want to make sure I heard it correctly. I thought I heard it at the work session. I want to make sure I'm hearing it now, and it's on the record. There will be dual-language at Harret next year, if this boundary change goes through.
The plan is to maintain the dual-language program at Harret for next year, but let me qualify that a little bit, because staffing these programs is really, really critical, and we are stretched. One of the reasons we had to cap the, the middle school program is because of the lack of staffing available to deliver instruction in Spanish. So it's, I don't want to put the board in a position where you are making your life into a promise. We, so this is the way I'd like to answer that question. We did not make, we're not planning to move dual-language out of Harret for next year, but we have to consider the staffing needs and requirements for that school. So to what extent, I can't tell you right now, but the planning so far has been about the boundary and not the program. So we haven't had discussions about moving programs out of Harret.
So just so we're clear here, students from all over the district, not just West Salem, transfer into Harret for the dual-language program, because I believe Ms. Nolton actually lives out in southeast Salem. And it's not just a West Salem transfer program, it's district-wide in-district transfer for the dual-language program.
And I really appreciate the question, and that's what I'd like to also emphasize, is that we are committed to dual-language in the Salem Kaiser School District. We have standards that have to be met in order to truly have a dual-language program. And that program will be placed based on the demand for it and based on our ability to have the adequate number of students and the balance of students and the staffing. So we've made the option to many families in the West Salem program to go to parish if the program was full. So I think it's important to understand that, that this is a district program. It happens to be located in West Salem. If the demand fades over time, we would have to consider where would be the ideal place to, to have it. So right now, it's at Harret, and our conversations, we did not discuss making any changes to its location. We have two programs at the elementary level in West Salem. The challenge that we have as a district is actually staffing those two programs adequately and K5. So that's why I'm reluctant in making a declaration here today, and I would not want for the board to make that declaration either. But if it gives you and the community any comfort, we have not had any discussions about moving it anywhere.
Paul, did you have a follow-up? I do not. Chris?
As I mentioned in the work session, I don't know if I actually mentioned this, is I did go to the meeting at Harret, and I went to the middle school meeting and then went to the final meeting. And I, the parent, several parents, many parents brought this up with me during the discussion time at meetings, and, and I assured them that there is at least one-seventh of this board who is thoroughly committed to seeing this district maintain dual-language programs and who would love, love to see them expanded should we be able to find the staffing. And that I, the thing that I couldn't guarantee was what building they would be in. And that, most of the parents that I talked to, I don't think I had anybody say to me, well, that's a problem for me. They were all basically just saying, we want the dual-language program. If our kid has to go to a different school to get it, that's something we can live with. But we'd really like to stay at Harret because that's what we're, that's what we're used to, is sort of the feeling that I was getting. So I, I find it interesting that several of us tonight have asked questions about that because I get the feeling there's more than one-seventh of this board that wants to see that program maintained and flourish, if anything. So I just want to finish that statement by saying to you folks that that's what I heard, that's what I've been saying, that I will continue to support that program, and I'm hoping that fellow board members have that same commitment to it.
The only other comment I'd make is the same comment I made in the work session. I think staff have the same consternation that our parents and students do. Moving them from their professional learning community that they may have established in their elementary school or at the middle school could be issues. So we talked about that in the work session, that those staffing decisions would be made as soon as possible, depending on the vote of this board with regard to the boundary changes, and looking at attendance coming up for the next year. I know as we begin to plan next school year, those are going to be decisions that are going to be made, but I want to make sure that for our staff and for our parents and for our students, the earlier in the process, the better, so that they can begin those planning processes. And I want to thank our staff, Mike and Salam, and your team that did a tremendous amount of work with the community in West Salem. I want to thank the parents and the community in West Salem for being respectful of the process. We're coming back again with a boundary change. I know that causes some consternation. You were here three years ago, why are you doing it again? I think we've made the case why. We've got some elementary schools that are significantly above where we would like to see them for class sizes and for size of the school overall. And we're going to try to strike that balance to get our, to get our populations. And as it comes to programs, I think you're hearing from this board, we're dedicated to a dual-language program. Where that ends up locale-wise is going to depend on staffing needs, and we understand that. But I do want to thank you and your team for your hard work and also for the parents, the respect that you showed to this process as well. Thank you. And Nancy?
Sorry, I just have one really quick question that I should have asked in the work session. Just clarifying the language, on both of these charts where you say existing students in area, is that reflecting, essentially, I know attendance at a school changes day to day, but is that basically reflecting the attendance at those individual schools where it says existing students in area?
Again, we're not talking about enrollment. We're talking about the catchment areas for the students. So each one of these planning areas has a number, and that's how many students live in that area.
Okay, so it does not?
For a neighborhood school, by definition, they would be attending that school. Remember, with the continuity, or I'd like to emphasize, with the continuity exemptions and the extensions, the actual change and transition period will be extended probably three, four, or five years. So these numbers won't be real until a future point in time, which gives us all a long runway to deal with this change. And that's also part of the Harret conversation. None of this happens overnight, so we took that into account. If there are no more questions, I'd like to finish just with, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Just, just a comment. I really appreciate your guys', your guys' respectfulness and adjustments for the community and taking all that into as much consideration as you have.
Well, we appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Mike, yep.
Well, just to finish the, the presentation with the board plate, this, this is our recommendation that you approve the West Salem School Attendance Area Boundary Changes. With the approval of the continuity exemptions policy applicable only to this boundary change, we're not asking for a permanent we're not asking for a permanent change to the continuity exemption, just for this. And it would only last through this boundary change. No action is required at this time, this recommendation is presented for a first reading. The school board is scheduled to take action at the February 11th, 2014 meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other additional questions, comments to this? If not, again, Mike reminded us this will be back in February, so we will have an opportunity to ask questions if you develop any in the meantime. If not, we'll move on in our agenda. We've already taken care of the lease next to the kitchen site, that'll be back next month for a decision. Moving on to reports, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Raddich.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and Board, this next report is a monitored report, and it's regarding Executive Limitation Number 7 that deals with budget and financial planning. And this report is provided to the board for discussion and consensus regarding the content. As the board is aware, this is the seventh of 12 monitoring reports to the board under the executive limitations policy for the current school year. Under this particular executive limitation, there are actually 11 indicators of compliance aligned with budgeting and financial planning. The board has seen the full report, and so I'm basically going to highlight about six of those areas very briefly, and then respond to any questions or comments the board may have. So the first one I'd like to address is the recommended budget is consistent with the board's established priorities, as included in the results policy. This recommended budget is aligned with the district's strategic plan and the board's results policy. We update our strategic plan annually, and despite the financial times, we have consistently moved the strategic plan forward and attempted to minimize the impact on our students in the classroom. The next limitation I'd like to address is number three. The proposed budget adequately describes proposed expenditures. As you look at the budget documents, the proposed budget documents details those expenditures both in written form, as well as charts and graphs, and summary information regarding expenditures and staffing levels. The fifth area, the superintendent discloses budget planning assumptions. As you know, budget planning assumptions are very critical to budget planning, and they're disclosed in the superintendent's budget message. And the budget message also includes information concerning the assumed funding levels. We're actually currently working through budget assumptions at this time, and will be interested in having those discussions with our board and budget committee members. Number seven is the other, is the next one I'd like to address. Discloses a variance from the targeted ending fund balance. As the board is aware, our financial management policy targets a 5% to 7% of resources for ending fund balance. The board did permit a deviation for 2013, 14 to 3%, and I'm really pleased to say we have not had to do that. Under number nine, the superintendent considers fiscal soundness in future years and builds organizational capabilities to achieve results in future years. As the board is aware, budget projections are based on multi-year planning, and this particular year's budget was balanced with a combination of negotiated compensation concessions, reduced expenditures, and the use of reserves. My comment on this one in particular is this particular limitation will be very, very difficult for a future superintendent to sustain unless the state of Oregon provides adequate and sustainable funding for our schools. It's very difficult to plan for the future when we're barely making it through today. And the last one I wanted to comment on is number 10. The budget reflects anticipated changes in employee compensation, including adjustments for step increases, education, and benefits. As the board is aware, salary adjustments and changes to benefits are based on the current collective bargaining agreements, and they are reflected in the budget. Without agreements for our employee groups, frankly, to reduce their compensation to balance our budget in 2013, our school year would likely have resulted in additional staff layoffs and program reductions. So I very much want to extend my appreciation to the entire district staff for the concessions that were made for us to continue and do the best we could given our limited financial resources. So those are the six limitations I wanted to address, and certainly open for questions or comments from the board.
Questions? If not, board, we look for consensus on this with a thumbs up from everybody around the table, so I think we have consensus.
Thank you.
Next is the report on Advanced Placement and IB Equity Project, I believe-
This is Salam Noor.
Salam?
Good evening again. For this presentation, I'm also joined by Kelly Carlisle, our Director of High Schools, and we have a guest from our partner that's helping us with this project, and that is Sasha Rubin. And Kelly's going to tell you more about Sasha and the role he's playing in this project and relative to our schools. So this may be an unusual presentation in some sorts, because we typically bring you a strategic plan report, and we did not have one scheduled for this month. So we thought it might be interesting for the board to learn about this wonderful opportunity that we have as a district that benefits students immensely. So the AP/IB Equity Project is a national project, right Sasha? And we and several districts in the state of Oregon have had the, have been approached by equal-opportunity schools to participate. And we feel really fortunate to have this as a resource, because our schools benefit from it, our students benefit from it. And you'll see soon the value of what I'm talking about. So we thought this would be of great interest to the board, because it aligns directly with our strategic plan goals that focus on college and career readiness, and how our staff use data to inform their instruction, but also to identify and implement interventions that are appropriate for students, and supports that will help them be successful. And that's really what this project is all about. It's about getting our students to be college and career-ready, it's providing them with the skills and the tools to prepare for that. And it's also preparing our teachers and our staff to use data in a very intentional way in terms of identifying students that can benefit from this opportunity. Most importantly, I think the last two bullets align very closely with the board's results policy and the outcomes that you want to see in our district, and that is increasing student access, all of student access, to rigorous curriculum in all of our schools. And that also contributes to closing the achievement gaps. These are essentially our avid kids. You've had an opportunity to hear directly from our avid students, and they were absolutely impressive. And they are the ones that we call low opportunity, high potential. We know that many of them have the potential to participate in more rigorous, more demanding coursework and course content, and many of them will be successful in college should they be given the opportunity, and be prepared to do that. So the Equal Opportunity Schools Project allows our schools, we have three schools that are currently participating, and three others that will come on board next year, to really identify those students in a very intentional and systematic way, and enroll them in Advanced Placement and IB courses that will help them be college and career-ready. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly, and he can give you a lot more detail about this project, because he's leading it and supporting it, and is a big champion for it. And he'll talk more about Sasha's role in the process.
Thank you, Salam. Good evening, Dr. Raddich, Chair Green, and members of the board. It's a thrill to be able to share with you this project that really focuses on closing achievement gaps, as Dr. Noor mentioned. In this process of using student data, we are getting the opportunity to take another look at how we enroll students into AP and IB classes. And so I want to start by making sure that we understand what AP and IB stand for. Those initials are important for us as we have this conversation tonight. First of all, AP, Advanced Placement, it represents over 30 courses that are supported by the College Board. They are standalone courses that students can apply to participate in, and they are present in all of our high schools at this point. We also have an international baccalaureate program, and it is housed at South Salem High School. You would want to think of that as a more comprehensive program that offers a culminating diploma if students successfully participate in all of the courses that are required, as well as successfully achieve high scores on the culminating tests. What these two things have in common, AP and IB, is that they involve rigorous learning, they require teacher training, each course has its syllabus that is upheld by the institutions that monitor these courses, and there is some sort of rigorous end-of-course program or exam. So we had the opportunity to listen to Equal Opportunity Schools about a year ago, when they invited us to consider participating in a project with them. And Salem-Kaiser was one of a handful of districts. Others included Bend-Lapine, Lebanon, Portland, David Douglas, and I'm missing one or two. Okay. And Equal Opportunity Schools is doing this work in conjunction with Harvard Educational Labs, and is funded with some significant support through Global Impact Award with Google. A total of 79 high schools were selected throughout the country, and a unique distinction for us in Salem-Kaiser is that all six of our high schools have been selected to participate in the program. We're starting with a cohort of three high schools, McKay, North, and Sprague. And two years from now, we'll be following with the other three high schools, West Salem, South Salem, and McNary, the neighborhood high schools. Furthermore, the project's effectiveness is going to be evaluated by the Education Innovation Laboratory at Harvard, and this will be the first-ever gold standard random assignment study of the impact that AP and IB have on college completion. That's a significant thing to participate and share our data up in that sort of a fashion. So I'd like to show you an example of how a district's participation data might look. This is not our district, this is not any particular district, but it's representative of what typically we would see in school districts. You can see that it examines sub-populations by ethnicities, and then further separates this by economic status. And this is based off of the data that you would find in free and reduced-price lunch registrations. The colored bars in this chart represent the current levels of student participation. You can see that across all ethnicities, the students from medium and high-income homes are more likely to participate in AP and IB classes than their peers who happen to live in low-income homes. This is a typical and prevalent pattern in most high schools across the country. The unfilled spaces above the colored bars represent the amount of students in each of those groups that it would take to essentially close the gaps that exist. So that's an example of district-level data. I'd like to share with you what it looks like at a particular school.
Just have a quick question.
Yes, Chris?
Why 55%?
The project assumes that we're expanding participation, and so we base it off of roughly a 10% increase in the white and Asian, medium and high-income population. That tends to be the group that participates at the highest levels. And we know that we're going to see that group increase. And so, correct me if I'm wrong Sasha, but what we've learned is that about a 10% increase is fairly accurate, and then that sets the bar for the rest of the groups.
So it doesn't have, it doesn't have anything to do with 40, 40, 20? I was wondering if maybe you'd set it there, because that's what you think you need to prepare for college in order to meet those goals. It would work, it seems like a logical number, so.
It certainly points in that direction, yeah. Okay. So here's an example, this is actual data, and it's from last year's participation in AP courses at North Salem High School. The data reflects their AP participation, and it's important to note that the bar lengths represent the percentage of the school's overall population for each subgroup. The actual number of students in each group is listed within the bars of the chart, I think you can see them. And so while it might look like we have an inordinately high number of African-American students, we actually have a very low number of students, but a high percentage of the representative population at the school there. So in order to close the gaps in all areas, we would set a goal of 17 more students who are white or Asian, and who come from low-income backgrounds, for instance. And overall, we would need to see at least 78 more students participating in AP classes at North. Now, we acknowledge that this data is dynamic, and it changes somewhat from year to year, but it gives us a gauge for setting our project goals, and that's what we've done for North. And we did a similar thing at each of the other high schools. So to put this into perspective on a national scale, the research would suggest that there are over 640,000 students who have the capability to participate and be successful in AP and IB courses. But for one reason or another, they're not in there. And so this project seeks to show ways that those gaps can be closed. We know that participation in AP and IB is important, and it's one of the best ways to prepare students for college and for their careers. But there's more to it when it comes to the impact that equitable participation can have. We're sending a clear message to our students and our community that we're committed to that level of equity, of preparing all students for the rigors of college, so that when they make the choice to attend post-secondary education, they're ready. So what I'd like to show you is a real example of a student profile. This is not one of our students, and I don't think Jimmy Jones was his actual name. But what this shows you is sort of a combination of student achievement data that Jimmy Jones has demonstrated when participating in various things such as the PSAT, and also survey data. And this is important, because this data guides our process. With a focus on this year's sophomores and juniors, and students like Jimmy Jones, we've compiled all of their data into a separate profile for each student. And here you can see that Jimmy, a hypothetical student, did fairly well on the critical reading for the PSAT. And in fact, he's at the level that is commensurate with other students who are participating in AP classes. That's an important data point for us to take a look at. The profile uses this, the survey information that Jimmy shared with us to talk about his aspirations for college. And you can see at the top of the slide, one of his goals is to actually obtain an advanced degree. The survey information not only shares his aspirations, but also teacher perceptions of Jimmy's readiness for AP. And in this case, where you see the three apples, what that states is that three staff members perceive that Jimmy would do well in an AP class. There are other things that are going to be helpful in terms of examining Jimmy as a potential candidate for participation in AP. But you'll also see that there are some barriers that exist for Jimmy. In his survey, he said that he doesn't feel welcome in an AP class. And he doesn't have an adult at school or at home who has pushed him or encouraged him to participate in an AP class. So here's the thing, this is teaching us to take a different look at the data for students. Typically, our processes for AP participation have led us to this place where some gaps do exist. This project asks us to do it differently, and to do it more thoroughly. And what will happen as a result of this is we will have a new group of students that we hadn't noticed before, because they weren't necessarily in the honors path, or they didn't necessarily score super-high on certain tests, and they didn't necessarily carry the high GPAs that other students do. But they carry the potential, they carry the capacity, and the will. So as we take a look at the students' barriers, we also want to think about what assets they bring with them. Things like grit, a growth mindset, college aspirations, self-efficacy, and academic strategy. And if Jimmy has enough of these assets, he will overcome the barriers. We're compiling lists of students that we believe are great potential participants in their AP classes. And we're going to aggressively enroll these students in AP classes for next year. And we're going to aggressively provide support for these students, so we don't just sign them up for failure, but we actually scaffold the supports that they are going to need in order to realize their success, and hopefully their college dreams. I'd love to open it up for questions if you have any, and certainly we can invite Sasha to respond as well.
Questions, Rick?
Thanks, Kelly, that's a great presentation, great work. I find the number interesting, where we got six schools, six of the high schools out of 79, you said, I think?
Yes.
In the nation, how, how did that come about?
We're a great school district, Rick.
Well, I know that, I mean-
I think we tried very hard to demonstrate our commitment- I think we, we tried very hard to demonstrate our commitment to this, this project. We are still trying very hard to demonstrate that commitment, and so, we're, we got lucky and we worked hard to get lucky.
It was great to lend that kind of support.
Yes.
Nancy.
This is like so wildly exciting. It just seems to me that it will force a change of culture in our schools, which is just essential to get us to 40, 40, 20, to just close the gap, all of that. I just want to applaud that you went after it and applaud your excitement for it. I'm excited to hear the, the next bit of data coming out.
Thank you.
Chris?
I'll just parrot that, too. I'm parroting you a lot tonight.
I guess you are.
Thank you for doing that. It's really good looking work. I, I just wanted to mention a couple ideas that are percolating around the back of my mind that are related to this, and they come from other things that I do. And, and they, one of them has to do with a statement that Cheryl Roberts made to Jeff and I when we were doing our community outreach for the characteristics of a new superintendent. And it, we'd sort of gotten off topic. And she mentioned that one of the things that the university system is starting to see, community college is starting to see, is that there is a difference in the performance of students in 200-level courses if they were in high school AP courses or IB courses versus if they were in college 100-level courses before. And that the level of rigor that goes on in high school courses is not up to the level of rigor that they tend to see in 100-level courses in the university. That bothered, I, I've been thinking about that statement ever since because it bothers me, having taught an AP course and having a wife who taught AP courses. And I talked to her about it for a while, and we were talking about how, how and why that might be. And I just wanted to put that on your radar because it's being talked about, people are seeing that. The other thing is through my work with the Higher Ed Commission, the whole idea of remedial, that, that we're still seeing students that are coming out of high schools, even kids that have had AP and IB, who even though they're performing at the, I guess it's the same question, really, it's the rigor question, performing at the, at the AP level in high school are still not passing the entry-level courses and are having to take remedial courses at, at college level. So, I'm just wondering if we're starting to get those college-level people together with our AP teachers to try to figure out what's going on in this regard and how we can make sure that our kids, when we give them that A or B in their AP or IB course, that it really.
Thank you for sharing that, that point. I think it's really important to acknowledge that in both cases, whether it's AP or IB, the institutions that uphold those syllabi engage both high school and college-level instructors to do the curriculum development. And we basically sign on to agree to those syllabi. It's not something that we can deviate from. And so, if readiness for college is still a bit of an issue, then that's something that they will need to address because we can't really deviate from the syllabus that we've agreed to, to teach and offer in our schools.
So, I, I agree with Kelly. Teachers have to be certified by these entities, but we shared with you our college and career readiness framework, and it has four domains. So, the academic part is an essential domain, the other is the persistence, it's the, the grit, it's the, the ability to navigate the university and community college system. So, we have other aspects that we've incorporated into our college and career readiness framework to have, to make sure students have the academic skills and the learning skills and the persistent skills so they can be better prepared for college.
And I think that's what Cheryl was talking about.
Yeah.
So, the last thing that I would want to share with you is just my deep appreciation for what is a true partnership in every sense of the word. Equal Opportunity Schools has never hesitated to be at our side, especially our project director that's here very often and working with us, working with Lebanon, working with other schools around Oregon. Really appreciate Dr. Sasha Rabkin and what he brings to the table for our schools. It's just been a delight to work together with you, and we thank you for, for that.
Chuck?
Yeah. How does, how does the IB and AP courses relate to the national and statewide efforts in STEM education?
Well, I, I think we can certainly say that the ones that, that deal directly with science or math, we would find the strongest correlations there to the STEM initiatives. But certainly just overall, when we think about the level of rigor, the level of critical thinking that students need to do in these courses, they prepare students well for the dilemmas that happen real time in any workplace. When we hear employers in STEM-related fields describe the nature of the work that they're doing, which is constantly innovating, innovating, constantly working on problems to be relevant and competitive in the marketplace, they keep talking about the same things that we do in terms of preparation. And it has to do with those critical thinking skills, being able to take a piece of text and really unpack it and see what it means. And we believe that the AP and the IB courses do that as well as anything that we can offer to our students.
Paul?
How are we making sure that we have enough classes, actual classes, for the students to take? Question one. Question two, what are we doing to prepare the staff to make sure that they're ready to teach those classes? And number three, what are we doing to keep those classes to a reasonable size so that the learning can mock or model what's happening at the college level?
Those are the current themes for, for discussion right now in our schedule planning for next year, our curriculum planning for next year. Obviously, we don't have more teachers coming in.
Right.
But we actually believe that if students need certain core subject requirements to graduate anyway, why not take an AP science course instead of a regular science course? So, we're, we're planning on AP just having a larger footprint within the master schedule than it currently does. That requires more teacher preparation.
Yes, it does.
And we do have a commitment to providing more teacher training at AP training sites. And actually, we just found out that we get to be a training site for some very exciting AP strands, and we'll hopefully have lots of teachers participating. And then in terms of keeping size of classes down, I, I think that we can get there. I think AP class sizes typically run in the 30s, and that's not ideal, but it's what we can do for the time being, and that pattern will probably continue at least until we, we get through this recession time.
So, I have, I have two questions, Kelly. How many kids are currently in our IB program at South Salem?
I don't have a number for you right now because we have some students who participate in some of the classes.
But not, okay.
And, and others who are just full bore, and I can't give you a specific read on how many. But I will tell you that the latest number of IB diplomas reached an all-time high of 36 last year, I'm going to say. I'm close.
Okay. And my follow, follows along with what Paul said, my question was, will we have capacity for this ramping up that you're talking about, staffing, resources for curriculum, et cetera? So, I'm assuming that through this next budgeting process, you at the high school level are taking that into consideration as you bring forward the budget, working with Mike and the rest of the team on our budget. If we want to truly ramp this up so that we meet our mission statement of our school district that all kids are, you know, graduate, career, and college ready.
Yeah.
We're going to see that in the budget, we'll see that reflected?
It's really about staff training.
Right, but that's, I mean, that's a big part of our budget.
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
Okay. Nancy?
I just wanted to clarify when you, when the question was asked about training of teachers, you talked about AP, and I'm assuming that's because you haven't started this process at South yet, but that there will be also a commensurate ramping up of training for IB.
Correct.
Teachers as well when you move the project into South.
Yes, and we have ongoing training all the time for our AP and IB teachers. So, that's, that's happening as we speak, but we certainly will see an increase of that.
Well, I don't see any other, and I just want to thank you for this. It's an exciting opportunity for our kids in the school district. Sasha, thanks for partnering with us and picking six of our six high schools. That's fantastic for us and our students. So, continue the good work.
Thank you.
Next is information. We've already taken a look at the Head Start Pre-Kinder Garden Program numbers. We do have in your packet at the back of your board plate, the calendar. And remember from our work session we met with Ray and Associates, some of these dates are going to be fluid, particularly as we go into February and March, as we start our process of looking for our permanent superintendent replacement. So, please be sure that you share your calendar blockouts, that you may be gone on vacation or you've got a work commitment with Christie, so that as we start to work with Ray and Associates on interviewing candidates, going through the applications, that we have that in our, in our calendars so that we lock those dates down as we need to. But you can see, we have a work session scheduled for January 28th, the topic yet to be determined. I, as I said before, topic yet to be determined, maybe dealing with our superintendent search on a lot of these. So, please be sure your calendar reflects the dates that are back there. Audience communications on non-agenda items, unless anybody had any questions on the meetings. Doesn't look like it. We had one person sign up, but they apparently have left. Is there anybody else that would like to testify on non-agenda items? Not seeing any. We'll move on to board report on activities. Board members. Chris?
Just wanted to mention that I, what, I guess my thing is to thank the people in the community that met with us to talk about the characteristics of our upcoming superintendent search. We met with lots of different groups, and I for one enjoyed those meetings and, and found people very engaged and very interested in talking about what they've seen in our current, or our former superintendent and what they would like to see in our next one. And, and that was, brought me to the, a level of thinking about it that I didn't have before that. Wanted to mention the lunch program that we ran our, 15 of our schools over the holidays. My wife and I volunteered every day at one of them and found that to be a great way to spend part of my, our holidays. It's, it's quite Christmasy to go spend time with kids and play games and do that kind of stuff. So, it's become part of our holidays anyhow. And the last thing I'll just mention is the class design team continues to meet. I'm continuing to go to those meetings. They're working now on this whole teacher incentive fund. Paul, you asked that question via email about some of the money and how it's being allotted, and that's a large part of the conversation at that group. Anybody has interest in any of that? Feel free to ask.
Anyone else?
If not, I'd just like to take this moment to thank Dr. Radic for stepping up and giving up your fishing and crabbing to see us through the rest of the school year and begin our planning for next school year. I know this probably wasn't what you had on your calendar, but I do appreciate you willing to join us and be our interim superintendent to get us through the rest of the school year. And with that, I'll turn it over to you for your comments.
Thank you. You know, as I was sitting here this evening, reflecting about communities across our state and across our nation that have gatherings just like this, where school board members, community members, and staff get together and talk about the education of the children in our community. And as I thought about that, I would like our community to take a special effort to thank our school board members. While January is typically school board appreciation month, it really ought to be school board appreciation every day. You folks are volunteers, you dedicate your time to wrestling with some difficult topics and to listening to our community and to trying to move our schools forward. So, I want to thank you for your leadership and for guiding this district. I'm excited about many of the initiatives that this district has put forward, and you heard one of those in particular this evening, about building capacity for all of our students to be very, very successful. So, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve you, but thank you especially for your service as volunteers on our school boards. And would ask the audience to please join me in thanking the board.[1762.53][1762.53][applause]
Anything else coming for the board? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.